It's one o'clock. We will start. Welcome to the October 3, 2024 Planning Commission hearing. I will call the hearing to order at one o'clock. Ms. Johnson, can we have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I'll take roll call. Chair Bauckey.
Here.
Vice Chair Wardlow.
Here.
Commissioner Barnwell.
Here.
Commissioner Boss.
Present.
Commissioner DeLucia.
Here.
Commissioner Wiskam is absent. We have a quorum. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to preliminary matters. First is requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or additions of exigent items. Ms. Arconega, do we have any of those?
Chair Bauckey, we do not.
Okay, then we have next is announcements and appeals. Do we have any of those?
Chair Bauckey, we do not.
Okay, moving on. Next, we have review, consideration, and actions of a number of Planning Commission minutes and resolutions. We have the September 12 Planning Commission minutes, the September 19 minutes, and Planning Commission Resolution 01124 for the project on Edgewater Way. Since we have folks that were not in attendance on the September 19 meeting, we're going to have to have these as separate motions. Who would like to make a motion or has comments on the September 12?
I'll make a motion to move the September 12 meeting.
A second.
We have a first and a second. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner Boss.
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucia.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodge.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wardlow.
Yes.
Chair Bauckey.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, for the September 19 amendments and resolution, can I, do we have any comments? And if not, I will take a motion.
I'll make a motion to move the, I guess, the minutes and the resolution.
Okay, can we have a second?
A second.
All right, can I have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner DeLucia.
Yes.
Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Barnwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Boss.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wardlow.
Yes.
Chair Bauckey.
Abstain.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on. Public comments pertaining to items not on this agenda. Do we have any members of the public at present or online who would like to speak?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. At this time, I haven't received any speaker slips, and I'm not seeing any movement, so I'll go ahead and move to virtual public comment. If you wish to speak on Zoom at this time, you can raise your hand and we'll call on you. I'm not seeing any hands raised, but we did receive written correspondence from the Holland family, Sam Carey, Gary Simpson, and Stephanie Fleming, that was distributed to the commission prior to the hearing. Without, turn it back over to you, Chair Bauckey.
Okay, moving on. We're now on new items. We have a new item at 17-21 West Montecito Street. The purpose before the Planning Commission is a parking modification, a development plan, a coastal development permit, and confirmation of the environmental analysis determination this project is exempt under SEQA. We have Kelly Bronson with the Planning Department, our associate planner, who's going to give our presentation. You're ready, ready to go. Let's do it.
Sure. Good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Bauckey and Commissioners. Kelly Brodessen, as you, thank you for the introduction. The project I am presenting today is located at 17, 19, and 21 West Montecito Street. And as you can see from this slide, it's located between State Street and Chapala Street. It's on the south side of the 101 and adjacent to the Santa Barbara's Train Depot. The site specifics, it's an 11,839 square foot lot. It's located in the HRC2 zone, which is hotel and related commercial. It's also in the non-applicable jurisdiction of the coastal zone, and it has an LCP, Land Use, Local Coastal Plan designation of hotel and related commerce, and medium-high residential, maximum 27 dwelling units per acre. Here's an aerial photo showing the project site, and you can see obviously the 101 to the top, and then the Train Depot to the bottom, kind of the southeast of the project site. And then to the southwest is the city parking lot. Here's a street facade of the existing buildings that are proposed to be demolished as part of this project along Montecito Street. The project description consists of a 44-room hotel with 42 parking spaces, and it will be a three-story building with a roof deck. And here is a slide showing the site plan. As you can see, with the exception of the 20-foot front setback along Montecito Street, the project will be pretty much developed from property line to property line. The applications that the applicant is requesting today is a parking modification to allow less than the required number of parking spaces, a development plan to allow the construction of the 11,255 square feet of non-residential development, a coastal development permit to allow the proposed development in the non-applicable jurisdiction of the coastal zone, and also a SEQA determination that the project is categorically exempt from further environmental review under SEQA guideline, Section 15332, which is an infill development. Here is a zoning map showing the HRC2 zone. And just to go into the substance of the HRC2 zone, it strives to promote and maintain and protect visitor-serving and commercial residential uses. Tourist and traveler-related uses are encouraged in this area. As such, hotels included, including related recreational and auxiliary uses for use by hotel guests are allowed and preferred. Residential use is prohibited in this zone, except in two areas, a parcel on Los Patos Way and Area A of the Cabrillo Plaza specific plan. Therefore, for this lot and this area, residential use is not an option. There is a parking modification requested for this project. The normal parking requirement for a hotel would be 44 spaces or one space per hotel room. The parking demand study prepared by Scott Shell of, I forgot the name of the company, is 27 to 41 spaces a maximum during the weekends. The applicant is providing 42 parking spaces, which is more than what is the weekend demand. And the modifications are required to make this project, to approve this modification. And please note that ITE hotel rates include hotel guests, hotel amenities, and hotel employees in the parking demand analysis. Also, there's a development plan proposed for this project. A non-residential project that involves the construction of more than 3,000 square feet of resident, non-residential floor area requires a development and plan approval from the Planning Commission pursuant to the city's Non-Residential Growth Management Program, which is in the city's zoning ordinance. In this case, because it's in the coastal zone, it would be in Title 28. The properties are currently developed with non-residential buildings, and the construction of the 16,500-square-foot hotel would result in a total of 11,255 net new non-resident rental floor area. So in order to approve a development plan, the Planning Commission would need to find that the proposed development complies with all provisions of the zoning ordinance, the proposed development is consistent with the principles of sound community planning, the proposed development will not have a significant adverse impact on the community's aesthetics or character, and that the proposed development is consistent with the policies of the City of Santa Barbara traffic management strategy. So regarding non-residential floor area and the non-residential growth allocation, each property, so they're basically are merging three parcels, and each lot has 1,000 square feet of minor addition and 2,000 square feet of small addition, because no non-residential floor area has been added to the site since the implementation of the growth management program. Also, an interesting fact is that 17 West Montecito consists of two legal lots per the title report, so that counts for, they each, each of those lots on 17 West Montecito get the minor and the small. Also, because vacant property, the 19 West Montecito is vacant, they get an allocation of 750 square feet. So also, the demolition of the buildings, they get a demolition credit of 5,200 square feet for the 17 and 21 West Montecito. So the total available square footage available for the site is 43, I'm sorry, 33,455 square feet. So the city did also do a review of the coastal land use policies as, with regard to this project. And we looked at the land use plan, and let's see, the project's site is located within the lower state component area. This is a key visitor-serving area that provides the public parking for coastal access and serves as a main entry to the beach from downtown. Also, overnight accommodations are an important component of the visitor-serving facilities. The project is consistent with the policies related to land use, including lower-cost visitor and recreational facilities, citing of new development, new hotel and motel development, and off-street parking for the new development. With regard to the lower-cost overnight accommodations issue, this proposed hotel does not qualify as a luxury hotel, because these types of amenities are not proposed, such as an onsite gym, a wellness spa, a full-scale restaurant, turned-down services, pool, or recreational, recreational amenities. Certain things that would qualify as luxury hotels are not provided on this site and won't be provided for this hotel. In response to a letter we've received from the California Coastal Commission yesterday morning, staff did add a condition of approval regarding moderate cost hotel provisions, and I do believe we have a memo that's provided to you explaining that. Our, the project does not meet the definition of luxury hotel, but we added this condition as an added benefit to the project. And I can read it aloud. The project shall be maintained as a moderate cost hotel in accordance with the Coastal Act, and recreation, sorry, no changes shall be allowed that would result in a change to its status as a moderate accommodation, such as addition of amenities that are typically associated with a luxury hotel, or an increase of 10% or more of the, oops, that was a typo. I should say 20 employees, sorry. Oops. So it should be 20 employees necessary. Any proposed change would only be approved through a substantial conformance determination or an amendment to the coastal development permit, and the level of that would be determined by the Community Development Director. The project is also consistency, consistent with policies related to scenic resources and visual quality. The rest, the project will be restoring and enhancing visually degraded areas, as we noticed at the site visit on Tuesday morning. It protects scenic resources and public views, as there's no views of the ocean from the street and no view, you can't see the site from the ocean. The development will be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood, and the building size, bulk, and scale was reviewed by the Historic Landmarks Commission. Regarding historical, historic and cultural resources, the project was reviewed by the city's Architectural Historian and the HLC, and the project will not detract from nearby historic resources, such as the Morton Bay Fig Train, Fig Tree, and the Train Depot. Also, the project site does not contain any cultural resources. However, arc monitoring will be required during any ground disturbance activities as an added measure of protection. Regarding flooding, the project is in the FEMA Flood Zone AE and must comply with FEMA flood requirements. And per the coastal land use plan, FEMA flood requirements are sufficient to address coastal flooding and sea level rise in this location. Per the city's Flood Plane Manager, the finished floor of the hotel shall be at least 21 and a half feet above sea level, and undercurrent parking for the garage is allowed for a hotel in this area. Therefore, the project is consistent with policies related to hazards and flooding, including coastal flooding. Here's a map showing the FEMA flood zone. You can see the project is right there in the blue. And this next slide just kind of shows the parking area, and it kind of outlines this, if you see in the shading, the flooding areas. And then this is a project or a slide showing the first floor plan. And you can see the front 20-foot setback, and then the rooms at the rear of the front, the first floor, and then the hotel, the lobby area, and the like grab-and-go and storage areas in the front of the building. Let's see. So design review, reviewed this project on two occasions. We do have Commissioner Butler from the Historic Landmarks Commission here. And you can see here, the, the front elevation on Montecito Street, you can see the entrance to the below-grade garage and the front entrance of the hotel. And then the slide on the right is the south elevation, which would be viewed from the back of the building. And here is the side that you would see from the east as you're driving up Montecito Street. The HLC responded to, I mean, sorry, the HLC felt that the project was in, heading in a right, in the right direction and was a good project for this area, and the project will return to HLC subsequent to any discretionary review for the development plan and the CUP or CDP. And here's a view of the hotel from the west elevation. Also, the project qualifies for an infill exemption under 15332, because very clearly the project is consistent with applicable general plan designation and all applicable general plan policies, as well as the applicable zoning and regulations. The development occurs within city limits on a project site of no more than five acres and is surrounded by urban uses. The project site has no value as a habitat for endangered or rare or threatened species, and approval of the project would not result in any significant effects relating to traffic, noise, air quality, or water quality. And the site can be adequately served by all required utilities and public services. Also, the project does not, it won't, none of the exceptions listed under SEQA guidelines don't apply to this project regarding the location of the site, accumulative impact, significant effect due to unusual circumstances, of which there are none on the site, scenic highways, hazardous waste sites, and historic resources. So in conclusion, staff recommends, well, the recommendation is that if approved as proposed, staff finds that the project would conform to the city's zoning and building ordinances and policies of the coastal land use plan. And therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the project and make the findings in the staff report subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A. And we did add the condition of approval that was provided to you in the memo earlier today. And that would be the end of staff's presentation, and I'll just let Megan introduce the other staff members and that are here today.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Next, we'll have the applicant present. I'm not sure who's going to, Mr. Menus.
Commissioner Bauckey or Chair Bauckey. I do want to note for your commission before the, the applicant presents, that we do have Commissioner Butler from the Historic Landmarks Commission here today. Nicole Hernandez, the city's Architectural Historian, to answer any questions regarding historic resources. Jessica Grant, the Supervising Transportation Planner regarding transportation and parking, and Christina Dye, the city's Building Official regarding flood and building requirements.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Menus, you have 15 minutes to present. When you have other members of your team, if they come up, please have them put their name in the record, and you can start. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Craig Myers. I'm the owner and operator of Cameron Houston Level, and I serve as the project man planner and project manager. We appreciate the commission's time and opportunity to have this hearing today. I'll be presenting the beginning of the presentation, and then I'll turn it over to our project architect, Claire Rowe. So I'd like to recognize our project team, which was entirely made up of local professionals and consulting firms. I've worked with a number of these folks over the years, and I've come to rely on their in-depth expertise and local knowledge, particularly to Santa Barbara and the South Coast. Also, a special thanks to the landowner, Paul Yasaka, his family and team for their patience through the, the land use entitlement process. Thank you goes out to the city's team as well. We work closely with many of these departments through this process on otherwise complicated design and policy adherence components. As an applicant, this is often a love-hate endeavor, but because of the city's in-depth review, we're proud to bring a project in front of your commission, which has been thoroughly vetted. Nicole, Raina, I see Jessica Grant here, Carter, thank you. A special thank goes out to Kelly as well for developing a very well-thought and comprehensive staff report. The location of the project's kind of been explained to you, but I included this slide particularly to, to show the kind of a one-mile radius. And I thought that was important, because it specifically notes our location, which is very nearby to other visitor-serving amenities, such as shopping, beach, the wharf, restaurants, museums, City College, and other sightseeing opportunities. I think location is, is really what kind of excites us about this project. Again, we are adjacent to the, to the Train Depot. We're in the downtown core. We're, we're near shopping. We're near restaurants. And so that's a really big opportunity, particularly if we want to enhance visitors' ability to visit Santa Barbara car-free. And I think the project really helps to build off of the good work the city's already done in the development of the waterfront area, funk zone, and lower state. Here's the permit history. So we've been kind of in this for about three years. We embarked on this journey, I guess, back in '22. And at that time, we did elect to utilize the city's voluntary pre-application process. So we did that to kind of vet the feasibility of the project. From there, we, we entered the formal PLN process. We've had three formal PLN submittals. I think there were a couple follow-up items, maybe, maybe actually five, I think. But, so, you know, the project's been very well vetted through staff in multiple reviews. We've attended HLC twice. So that kind of brings us to today. But I want to give you a snapshot of kind of the permit history. A lot of this slide is, was covered in Kelly's presentation, but I wanted to include these notes to show adherence to the local land use policies, and particularly to emphasize that, you know, the zoning on this site in particular does not allow for residential housing. I know that's been a recent topic with similar projects, so I wanted to identify that. These next couple slides I'll go through relatively quickly, but, you know, it's information from our friends at Visit Santa Barbara. I'd just like to highlight, you know, there's about over 6 million visitors to our region. About 25% of those do utilize hotels, motels, and inns. Another slide from Visit Santa Barbara, again, kind of talking about the, you know, how tourist translates to, into real, real tax revenue. And so I think we're talking about some serious dollars. I'm not going to highlight those, but there is real tax revenue from TOT tax, sales tax, property tax. I included this slide because there was a public comment inquiring about the service level intended for this hotel. And, you know, let me be clear, the, the 21 West Montecito Street Hotel is not a luxury hotel. First of all, I'll, I'll remind you that we're literally on .6 of an acre, which is smaller than most single-family dwelling lots. So we just really don't even have the real estate to provide luxury resort type of amenities. But I put this, this list together. It is typical luxury hotel amenities. We, we've consulted with operators, and, and the list of 20 items are, are some of the things you would typically see in a luxury hotel, you know, golf course, spa and wellness, room service, gaming centers, onsite amenities such as bowling alleys or, or bocce ball courts, you know, full service, three-meal-a-day service. And you can see in the column next to it, we have none of those. In the bottom chart, I did include some non-luxury components of our project. These generally includes smaller-sized hotel rooms, really limited furniture. There was some discussion about, you know, we have two, two room types. I'll tell you with a hotel of this size, I mean, a 44-unit hotel is relatively small. You know, I think we would look to have more hotel type or hotel room types, but it's really important to be able to scale those, those room types and stack them. And so with a relatively small hotel, the ability to stack it ensures that, you know, the, from a construction feasibility perspective, it, it is a, is a project that we can build. What else? You can't see on the bottom, but again, our amenities in the room, you know, we, you know, we have showers only. There's no bathing tubs. A bathing tub is typically a resort kind of style. Double vanities, we have a single vanity. So I thought that would be helpful, and I wanted to address that public comment. Benefits of Santa Barbara, again, you know, TOT, sales tax, property tax. You know, I think we are excited about promoting car-free Santa Barbara, particularly with our location next to the, the train station and the depot, and then to build off the great work the city's done with the recent enhancements of the funk zone, lower state street, and waterfront. I also included in here, I know it's really hard to see the text, but we have our walkability index. Please know that green is good, because I know you probably can't read it, but green is the above-average and most walkable areas, and we're obviously surrounded by green. So I'll, I'll end with this. You know, respect, with respect to sound community planning, which is a finding that your commission needs to make, you know, it is following the city's governing documents, and in this case, allowing a hotel use where the general plan and the zoning ordinance dictate. It's appropriately locating overnight accommodations next to major transit hubs, where visitors can utilize the train and bus depot right next door to visit Santa Barbara, car-free if they choose. It's providing for these visitors who, who then in turn support our mom-and-pop shops, our local restaurants and businesses in the waterfront, funk zone, and State Street area. It's, it's this overall enhancement of the downtown core, where visitors and residents alike live, work, and play. It's the critical mass of industry and commerce, which It's the critical mass of industry and commerce, which substantiates great housing ideas like adaptive reuse housing along State Street, encourages developers to continue density housing in the downtown core through programs such as the city's average unit density program, and supports the 3,000 accessory dwelling units recently permitted and constructed in our county, of which 1,000 of those ADUs are in the city proper. So to me, someone who's dedicated my entire career to land use planning, sound community planning is in part enhancing the ecosystem of our urbanized area and built environment. And in the case of this proposed hotel, in this location, and on this specific site, I believe it adds to the vitality of the downtown core, which in turn strengthens our urbanized ecosystem. I believe the 21 West Montecito Street Hotel will serve as an enhancement to the city's Santa Barbara for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Balki and commissioners. Claire Rel, architect, AB Design Studio. I'm going to run through these slides relatively quickly. I know we have about five minutes left, and some of these are going to be repetitive from what Ms. Broaddus presented. I'm going to talk a little bit about surrounding uses, and I'll talk a little bit about the project design. The project that we're looking at here, this site is generally an island, as you saw at the site visit the other day. We have Montecito Street to the north. To the south is the train depot and associated parking lots, and then to the east and west are other city parking lots. So we're not abutting any neighbors or any other uses other than city parking lots at this point and city streets. A quick recap on the parking. We are requesting a modification. We have 44 keys and 42 spaces. Two of those are ADA spaces. And we have, in addition to that, we have four EV charging stations that we're installing and six future EV charging stations. So we have the provision to add more later, and those will be installed as part of our project. As mentioned before, AT traffic study shows peak demand of 27 to 36 on the weekdays and 27 to 41 on the weekends, and we're providing 42 spaces. So we're still above that number. In the staff report was a letter from Signature, who's our valet service provider. They anticipate a capture rate of 68.43%. That means that's how many people they think will be overnight stays or overnight parking on the non-peak demand and 76% on the peak demand. So that number, 33, is kind of like their projected amount of parking spaces that'll be used on an overnight. Here's some photos from the project site. We didn't go through these, but you were out at the site visit the other day. But here's the Ray Road side. That's the building that's being removed. Here's back in the parking lot at the train depot. Again, these are the structures being removed, and then the parking structure or the parking lot here to the west, and this is directly behind the building. Here's another view from Montecito Street, looking into the parking lot. Here's the subject parcel here. And then here's the, from the west side, from kind of by the tree, looking towards the project. We looked at this slide previously, so I won't spend too much time on it, but it was mentioned about the 20-foot setback, which is this line here, and the rest of the building fits on the site, and we have zero setbacks on the west, south, and east. Here's our partially subterranean parking lot, parking area. We come down a ramp here, and then this area here is all valet parking. Here's the ADA parking spaces here, and then we have egress stairs and egress stairs here. The building is down about five or six feet from the current grade elevation. First-floor plan, which you've seen earlier, I won't go into much detail on this, but we do have a lobby area here, a little meeting room, a small little kitchen that we're going to use for light fare, and then some rooms at the ground floor. This finished-floor elevation is at the 21-foot-six, as mentioned before, which is above the DFE. Here's our second-floor plan, third floor, and roof. We have a roof deck amenity for the hotel guests, and then we have solar requirement over here, providing solar panels, and then this will be for mechanical uses, A-FACI and things of that nature. We've seen some of these elevations, so I'll go through these rather quickly. But you can see here on this elevation, I'll just point this out, this is the finished-floor elevation, which is elevated above the existing grade, which is here. So we're up about 42 inches above existing grade, and this is the entry to the parking Here's the Ray Road side or the east elevation of the project. Just a couple of things, we have a trash enclosure over here, and then we have the stairs coming up from below, and then this is an ingress and egress point of the building on this side. And you can see how these are elevated above street level, which is down here. By the way, this dash line shows the slab of the parking below, so you can kind of see that relative to the grade. This is the rear, facing the train depot. This is the east side elevation. This actually shows in profile the ramp coming down to the parking area below and the slab of the parking area here. I know there were some questions about that at the site visit. And then we've included a section of the building, just for clarity's sake, so that everybody understands. This is Montecito Street. On the right, we have a ramp that comes down into the lower parking garage here, and you can see the rooms stack above and then the roof deck. So this kind of helps you understand in section how the building's organized. We have a few renderings that we were provided by our team for review at HLC, and these are a few different views of the project from street level, and then there was a few from sort of like what you see going by on the freeway here and here. And I think that's the last slide, so just in time.
Okay.
Thank you very much for letting us present this.
So you've used up all your time, right? Okay. So, okay. So we're going to start next with public comments on this project. Do we have any in-person commentators? Oh, we have one walking up. Okay.
Thank you, Chair Balki. At this time, I do have two speaker slips, so we'll go ahead and start with Paul Yasaka. If you want to make your way up to the podium, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Well, let me begin by saying that it's an honor to be before you today. I love Santa Barbara. That's all I can say. My home has been here since 1947, and this property was purchased by my father, Caesar Yasaka, in 1948, and a year after that, I was born here. But I do want to say that 17 West Montecito Street is dear to my heart, because as a youth, I grew up in that building. And I've been able to retain it for all of these years, even though we've had some serious challenges with a lot of the area projects, mainly the crosstown freeway, which was horrible, but a necessity. Over the years, I've had lots of dreams. I know my dad did a possibility of developing the property. He unfortunately never had that opportunity to fulfill that, excuse me, but I did. But due to the fact that there were a lot of pushbacks in terms of the challenges that the city requires, in terms of what a project should consist of, it never materialized. So for the record, I don't know if you have, but I do have a news press rendering of what the original property, this is 1948, January. This was in the news press with my father thanking all of the trades that took place in building that wonderful old building. And in its time, it was a glorious result. This is something that I always look at, because I have this in my office, and I also reflect back on it regarding some of the wonderful experiences that we incurred as youth, going down to the harbor with our fishing poles, hauling our chairs over to State Street, watching the parade go over the crosstown freeways, all the different service stations along the way, the Harley-Davidson riders, Hells Angels coming through and parking in front of our building, the fig tree, and all of those challenges. Does that mean that my time is up?
You can have another second or two.
Okay. So let me tell you that the city, I'm glad that this has happened, and I thank the developers, the project planners, but the city was very interested in this property to the extent that they appropriated $20,000 to do a transition into a transit center. That never materialized, and unfortunately, everything was lost, and Jeff Shelton was great in doing that. Dave Davis was instrumental in helping with that project. Paul Casey was involved. All the people within the city, historically, that probably are all gone now, wanted to see something special. So in closing, I think that they will be approving of what you're approving of, and that today, it's moving forward to a bigger and better and brighter thing as a hotel as you enter the city, driving through, and you see this wonderful building that I'll be proud of and everybody around the surrounding area will also be proud of. So thank you for giving me the three minutes. I will conclude. I think these guys did a great job and dear to my heart. Okay? It's just emotional.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Steve Johnson. If you want to make your way up to the podium, you'll have three minutes to speak.
I trust you can hear me. I am Steve Johnson. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I'll first mention, I like everything about this project, except the subgrade parking. It's a beautiful project. It'll be a credit to the city, but approving it with subgrade parking will set a terrible precedent that I'll try to go into detail a bit more. First, I want to note that the staff report mentions some land use policies, but it fails to note land use policy 5.1-35. You might ask staff, why did it omit that land use policy? That land use policy calls for restricting basements in flood zones. Granting a parking modification would not be restricting, but it would be accommodating a basement in a flood zone. There's a much simpler solution. Grant a modification to require no parking spaces. This was described as a car-free hotel. Make it a car-free hotel, no parking requirement. You've got an Amtrak 100 yards away. It'll be jammed every Saturday night. I guarantee you, I come down, get off at the Amtrak Saturday nights, there's a mob of people. I'm sure they could get 44 that would prefer to spend the Saturday night in Santa Barbara without a car. That's how they got here, without a car. The project is not mixed-use. It is not mixed-use. There's a confusion that's been prevalent for years. I think some of the planners understand it now, but it's not on the plans. The plans say it's mixed-use, and they cite a non-German FEMA guideline. The governing document is ACE 24. ACE 24 says hotels are residential. Residential is not allowed over subgrade parking. If you approve this, you're going to have FEMA coming back. I'll say something else. If you approve any project with subgrade parking in a flood zone, it drives the insurance rates up for the entire city. And FEMA's going to wonder, why are you approving subgrade parking under residential? The next applicant is going to be offering a three-story apartment. Now, maybe there's some ambiguity to the hotel, but they're going to offer a three-story apartment as well. This is okay, because it's mixed-use. What makes this project mixed-use? If nothing else comes out of my discussion today, please ask staff, what makes this project mixed-use? Where is the non-residential component? Look at the top. Look at the section. There's no non-residential. The little bit of non-rooms are what's called ancillary uses. It's a hotel. ACE 24 calls it residential. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, do we have any other speakers present or online?
Thank you, Chair Balki. At this time, I don't have any further speaker slips, and I'm not seeing any movement, so I'll go ahead and move to virtual public comment. If you wish to speak on Zoom at this time, you can raise your hand, and we'll call on you. I do see one hand raised for Brittany Zajik, so I'm going to go ahead and give you permission to speak, and you'll just have to unmute yourself.
Thank you, Honorable Chair Balki and Planning Commission. Brittany Zajik speaking here as an individual today. Two questions. One, can city staff please explain why this project does not have to go to ABR for review? And two, does the parking demand include employee parking? How many employees will this hotel have? And can PC please put a cap on the number of employees as a condition of approval similar to other projects in the area? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, I'm not seeing any further hands raised on Zoom, but we did receive written correspondence from Paul Yasaka, Mitch Stark, Stephen Johnson, and Tyler Liddell that was distributed to the commission prior to the hearing. And with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Balki.
Okay. So we're going to do our question period. I will turn it now back to my fellow commissioners for questions. Who would like to go first? I have Commissioner Boss followed by Commissioner DeLucio. So Commissioner Boss, please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. So I live in the neighborhood, and when I first saw the renderings, I think my reaction was, this will make it so much prettier. This is a beautiful addition to the neighborhood that I live in, and I take the train a couple of times a month. So really, really welcome this potential project. I have a few questions. I'll start out with parking. So I understand there are 44 spaces required. The parking modification request is for 42 spaces, and there would be 40 valet-only for only hotel guests and two ADA, which presumably would be for hotel guests as well. So visitor parking, I understood from the site visit, they would be directed to park on the street or in a public lot, which they would have to pay for. We were there on a Tuesday morning at 8:00 a.m., so there were a handful of parking spots that were free outside, which was great. But I'm thinking about weekends or heavily-visited areas, and not sure where other visitors, so people who maybe live here and are visiting guests, where they would park, and then really concerned about staff parking. I think I understood correctly that there are potentially 20 employees. So where are they going to park with the limited free street parking or limited-time street parking? And understanding that folks who work in hospitality are not paid really well, so how are they going to afford to pay to park in the public lot? So concerned about parking availability and accessibility for folks who are visiting guests and who are employed there. And I'm not sure if the developer-owner or operator would be covering the cost of parking for the employees. Sorry, lots of questions there.
Yeah. For the record, Jessica Grant, supervising transportation planner with the city, and Commissioner Boss through the chair. With respect to parking, when the parking demand study was done by ATE, but typical when staff or consultants reviewing the parking, and we rely a lot on the Institute of Transportation Engineers on parking manuals as well as the Urban Land Institute. And in general, although like from like a zoning perspective, it's like a parking's done one per hotel unit, that's generally, but embedded in that, if you dive into the details, it goes beyond just the hotel patrons. It is inclusive of employees, too. Note that employees and hotel Note that employees and hotel patrons, when you think of from a parking standpoint, that you're there at different times throughout the day. So like an employee peak time or think of the cleaning crews or janitorials, those types of uses are more in between when they, after the guests leave and before the next batch arrives. So anyway, it's just different times of demand within the lot. But, and then what we also had, not only for the valet service, but what was sort of typical of the boutique hotels they developed, we wanted to understand too what was kind of a realistic capacity. And I believe as Clay Orrell mentioned, it was right around like the 65% capacity that they were seeing for their hotel guests across various hotels and that's included as an attachment in the staff report. And so again, that kind of cued to us that there's again, plenty of other parking for the employees. But we were very conservative on the zoning request to park at like the 85th capacity. So that's what this did. So we feel like we've been taking a conservative approach. As more background with parking, the city of Santa Barbara did do its own analysis back in 2018 of the whole funk zone and relooking at what is parking in that entire area look like. And generally that there is a lot of availability, that a lot of the public lots are underparked. And of course, there's the precious on-street parking right next to a lot of the areas, not right adjacent to this hotel, but more where the kind of the heart of the wineries and breweries becomes that like precious space. This is an area that's would really benefit probably from parking management for price parking in the future. And that's part of our, written in the climate action plan as well as our general plan. But in general, in this facility and when you go through the funk zone study report too, if there are visitors and say it's full or your max tight season, there is availability on the street and public parking lots.
Okay. So I want to make sure I understood correctly. So the employees can also use the parking spaces in the hotel?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I think I heard something different in the site visit. So confirming that employees can also use some of the 44 parking spots.
That's correct.
Okay.
And it's really, it becomes an operational issue with the hotel. It's generally what we find is it's not good to say X amount for employees, X amount for hotel guests. It is really, it depends and it's better to operationally handle that. And what's nice is they do have, they'll have an on 24/7 valet service.
Yeah, that is great. Thank you. Okay, so now I'm going to move a bit to the zoning. So I understand with the zoning, it's, I think the map, I think it was on slide nine, might be helpful. I was trying to understand because it makes me think of gerrymandering maps a little bit, trying to understand. So if we're an area that is hotel and related commerce, but also medium-high residential, but that medium-high residential is only allowed on two very small parts of the zoning, it seems like it's misnamed incorrectly to me. And there was a note also in the staff report that there is multifamily housing right nearby. So I'm trying to understand if there's a better explanation about why housing wouldn't be allowed there and if it's just because this is the way that it is written, could they have a manager unit or employee housing onsite?
Chair Bauckey and Commissioner Boss, yes, the HRC 2 zone was purposely developed to promote uses that would cater to the marina, the beach, and the harbor. And it specifically did not allow housing because they wanted to bring in more non-residential uses and hotel-oriented uses. I think before that, it was manufacturing zone and you wouldn't have been able to allow due housing there anyways. So there are probably some mixed use nearby, but I don't know if there's any actually, maybe, I don't think there's any actually in this zone, maybe in the orange zone further to the southwest or yeah. So yeah, it's the HRC zone, which, and so the general plan calls out for the residential, but so the general plan is kind of overarching. You start with the general plan and then you kind of go down to the zoning and that's, so it is for that general area, if you just looked at the general plan map, it would allow zoning in certain areas. Then when you get down to the nitty-gritty, that's where the zoning is and that's where HRC 2 is limited to just hotel.
Okay. So the intent of the zoning in this area is to cater to people who do not live here? People who would come and visit?
Yes, visitor-serving accommodations.
Okay, thank you. And then also in the staff report, I think this is on underparking modification as well, there is an assumption of alternative travel modes. And I'm curious, I'm trying to understand the difference of, I know we talked about luxury hotels, which was very helpful to see the differences laid out, so thank you. When I saw the word boutique, boutique to me, I equate with luxury. So I was, I was curious if there's some research that shows people who go to boutique hotels typically do not drive, they typically take the train or they typically bike? And is that why we're making the assumption that this will be more of a car-free hotel?
Commissioner Boss through the chair. The, it's not, I would say it's a general trend. I don't have exact statistics, but in the waterfront and down, and also downtown, there are a fair amount of hotel patrons that come car-free, either through the airport, train, the bus. And I think that especially for this hotel, and I know, I guess from personal experience too, is if you know you're arriving from alternative means, you tend to pick out the locations or where your destination is. And of course, this is in the heart of the waterfront and downtown adjacent that would all meet the means of being car-free. So they gave it like a 5% reduction. Could probably be a little bit higher than that, but again, we try to be conservative, but not so overly conservative, but I felt, we felt that that was a fair adjustment for this. And then there's also just a lot of programs in place in Santa Barbara through Amtrak where you get a 20% discount and those types of things for going car-free, so.
Okay. So we're assuming folks who are, they're taking advantage of the train discount, which is great, and they're going to stay at a boutique hotel right next to the beach? That's kind of the assumption that we're making?
Yeah, I think from a land use or boutique, to me means like a quaint hotel, not over in amenities. It's, to me, it's like the location, location, I think. But Ms. Ursunega, if you want to add more to that?
Commissioner Boss through the chair. Yeah, to Ms. Grant's point, I think the trend, a couple of things. I don't think the IT rates, correct me if I'm wrong, distinguish between boutique and hotels and larger hotels. It's all one hotel rate. So that distinction isn't there in the traffic analysis. Personally, I'd also say that the rise in like Uber or car demand services has also led to an increase in car-free because you know that you have something to rely on if you need it to go somewhere in addition to just walking or alternative modes. So I do think that has been a trend. We've seen other hotels, including the Hotel Californian, come in and take advantage of like AB 2097, you know, parking reductions because they haven't seen the car demand that they initially were required to provide. So parking demand, excuse me. So that's all I would add.
Okay. Thank you. That is helpful. There's also a section about non-residential growth allocation, which I don't think we've seen that discussion much in some of the projects we've seen recently. So I was curious when that was created and how close are we to the maximum of the 1.35 million?
Chair Bauckey and Commissioner Boss, thank you. Yes, I know you asked this at the site visit. I know, I did reach out to our staff to find out how close we are to the 1.3 million and he's going to get me that information and I can provide it to the whole commission at a later date. I do know we're way below it. And also, you keep in mind that whenever a project demolishes non-residential square footage, for example, to create a new housing project, that square footage goes into the pot, basically. So that becomes available for future use. I also do not know the exact date of when that ordinance was created. It's been more than 30 years, but I can get that. 1989, Jessica says. So is that 30 years? Yes. I can, yeah, so I can get you the numbers of how close we are to the 1.35 million if, at a later date.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question, because there were notes in our agenda packet, but also in the presentations today about TOT, so tourist generating income. Is there a projection on how much TOT that would bring in each year? No? Okay. Okay. And I think the rest of my questions are on the underground parking and I'm sure other people have those questions. So I'll end my questions there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Boss. Commissioner DeLucio.
Thank you, Commissioner Bush. You've answered, asked some of my questions, which is good. I guess just to get out of the way, I guess this is going before Historic Landmarks Commission and has on a couple of occasions, is it because it's in the EPV, correct? Because somebody, it was a question, why isn't it going before ABR and it wouldn't go be before both commissions? So Chair, I know we have a representative here from HLC. I don't know if they, I'd be curious if they had anything they wanted to comment on. Keith Butler, did you want to comment anything, on anything today or you have more for questions? I'm putting him on the spot. We used to work together.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Keith Butler. I here on behalf of the Historic Landmark Commission. We last reviewed this project on March 27th for the second time and we basically came away that we were in favor of the project. We look at design, scope and scale, et cetera. We were in favor of it. We felt it was appropriate at that point in time to bring it forward to the planning commission. We did have a few comments, a few additional thoughts. In typical HLC nomenclature, we felt that the front entry could use more poetry. So we thought that there could be a little additional design, a little more design support, et cetera. We were concerned about the size of the garage openings. We look at this constantly. So we addressed that we felt they needed to be narrowed somewhat, maybe dropped in height, add a little more detail so it doesn't look like a giant gaping mass from the street. So the garage openings. We know that there's a roof deck as part of the plan and there's going to be landscaping up there, so we asked that the landscaping not be available from street level, particularly Montecito. For an additional comment to that, the window openings, we felt were a bit too big and they need to add some more plaster and some more detail, a little bit more reflective of the EPV sort of typical architecture that we find in the neighborhood. And then there's a few other minor comments, but we were very supportive of the project and we appreciated that they planned to put a motorcycle weather vane on the top of the building so it has some sort of memorialization of the history of the site. So I hope that helps.
Thank you. I had a couple more questions. Thank you, Keith. Does anybody here can answer a couple environmental questions? Or we don't really have anybody here today for that.
Yes, we can, we can help with that.
One has to do, I know that they need to do a, I guess, bear with me one second. It's, they have to do a remediation action plan and soil management plan and I guess that goes before the Santa Barbara County Environmental Health Services. That has to do with some contamination soil on the site. So is that, how does a city get involved with that to help monitor that? Or is it all done by the county?
Thank you. Commissioner DeLucio through the chair. So hazardous materials, the city relies on the county EHS as our subject matter expert to review. They're the regulatory agency over hazardous materials in the county as delegated to them by the state. So any site that has potential contamination, regardless of source, whether it's groundwater, soil contamination or vapors, all gets regulated by county EHS. The first step is to assess the contamination onsite and planning does that in our application review process is to understand if there's any potential. That's what CEQA asks of us is to confirm any potential for environmental impacts as a result of the project. So based on the information that's discovered during that initial review and assessment, the EHS then looks at, EHS reviews those reports and either concurs or gives guidance as how to embellish or, you know, edit the reports and make sure that the recommended measures are appropriate. Contamination is pretty predominant throughout the city because we have a lot of earthquake fill from the 1924 earthquake. There's other various sources. Projects that, so it is common to have hazardous materials onsite. It's a standard regulatory agency measures that all projects are required to comply with. If there's any discovery of contamination, you're legally required to stop and comply with EHS standards. So we use the information to make sure we're in compliance with CEQA. If there are no leaking underground storage tanks found, then the project can qualify for categorical exemptions as this does and it would continue to coordinate and comply with EHS standards during construction. So they have oversight during construction and closure of the site.
Okay, thank you for that. And I have one more question, actually do with the garage that they're going to build. What is this I'm hearing about the, I mean, I know this has come up before about it's not mixed, it has to be mixed use because it's in a flood zone and it needs to be mixed use in order to put the garage in? And also, that's part of the question, another part would be, how is that going to be, if we approve this project, it goes forward and how will it be monitored as the garage is put in? And also, and they may probably need to put some equipment in in order to keep the water out in the future? And how is that all monitored going forward? I know it's a double question.
First of all, thank you. My name is Tina and I am the Chief Building Official and Flood Plane Administrator for the city. It's nice to meet you. So that's a, not an easy answer. So I'll start with how is this a mixed-use building? And it's mixed use by definition. And I should start by saying that there are four governing documents, laws, standards that govern this type of construction in a flood, in this type of flood plane, this designation. And that is the Code of Federal Regulations, also known as the National Flood Insurance Program and the California Building Code and the city's flood plane ordinance and ACE 24, which is adopted by that flood plane ordinance. So there's a very, there's not just one governing law that regulates this. So that being said, there, what designates it mixed use is by definition of the NFIP mixed use definition, which says that at least 25, or a minimum of 25% has to be non-habitation business use area or non-residential, which this project does qualify for. Another determining factor is that the building code designates, classifies different types of uses by occupancy. Our occupancy is residential and then there are various other occupancies. Within this building, we have, excuse me, we have assembly areas, which is an A occupancy. Let's see, I wrote these down. We have S2, which is storage and it's also the parking garage. That's not in our occupancy. And we have B occupancy. So that's what makes it a mixed-use building.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. And I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but you answered that question so well. I so appreciate that. And the other question, it has to do with installing the garage. I know there's, it's a flood zone and it's going to require probably some de-watering and probably some ongoing type of equipment installed.
Are you, thank you, Commissioner DeLucio through the chair. Are you referring to during construction or the dry flood?
During construction and also after construction.
I am not familiar with what the designer is going to propose, so I can't answer that at this time.
Would the designer be able to answer that question?
Possibly.
I think they raised that. I think you...
Commissioner DeLucio through the chair. Can you repeat the question again?
Well, you're going to install a garage. First, before you install, you've had to do some de-watering, correct?
We are not anticipating de-watering, because we're above the water table, so we're not anticipating that at this time. We're not that far along yet to get into fully designing the structure and the foundation system.
Okay, so you're not there yet, but after design, did you anticipate there to be any issue with water, that you had to put some equipment in, in order to?
We're not anticipating that at the moment, the way we've been looking at it.
Okay, so if we, maybe staff can help. If we were to approve this project, is there any kind of condition in here, or how will that be discovered and monitored?
Commissioner DeLucio through the chair. Chris Short, our Senior Plan Check Engineer is here, and he can publicly address that question.
If you don't mind, I'll take one first stab. I want to just make a couple clarifications. So shallow groundwater and flooding are two different things, right? So when you're hitting the water table, that's how deep you're going to hit in groundwater. And that usually, that in your, if you're in areas with shallow groundwater, you would need de-watering during construction to install the structures and the foundation system. This is only in an area with potentially shallow groundwater. That doesn't immediately trigger that. However, during building permit, they would have to address that in an AGIO soils reports, and make sure that it's engineered accordingly, and then their construction plan would reflect that. In regards to flooding, that's an incident, right? So it's when it's either raining or coastal flooding, sea level rise. And so that would be different in terms of whether or not, it would require pumps during like a flood event. That would also be something that would be a flood code requirement or not. And that's perhaps where Mr. Short can speak to.
Thank you. My name's Chris Short. I'm Flood Plane Coordinator and Senior Plan Check Engineer for the city. FEMA has specific criteria. In order to justify a mixed-use project, one of their key differences between normally a residential occupancy is not allowed over a basement. That's a very standard statement from FEMA. However, their caveat is if a structural engineer, or a structurally engineered basement is designed to meet flood capacity for uplift, horizontal impact loads, those kinds of things, then they allow a residential use over a basement. They also have design criteria for how much the basement can leak, and also for any kind of removal of it. So it's not just our normal procedures for the building code that's going to govern this. FEMA is also looking at this very intently, and giving their standards above and beyond to address the flood impacts.
Thank you. I just wanted to raise those questions. I think you guys did a really good job answering the questions, but they're really important questions. Based on my tenure on this commission, what I've been through so far, I felt like we needed to flush those out. And I do have another question, though, because we should be learning by, you know, what we've done in the past. And so maybe I need to ask the applicant a question, or maybe I need to ask staffs a question. First, I want to thank staff for being proactive and getting in touch with the Coastal Commission, and letting them know what we're doing with the hotel. But why are they writing a letter, why do we get a letter saying that we didn't have rationale for the lower-cost visitor-serving facility, you know, that it's not going to be a luxury hotel? We don't give rationale for that. We don't address that before this meeting, and we also don't address the cost point. Definition, a part of that would be how much you're going to rent, the median price you're going to rent the rooms for, and based on, you know, what Santa Barbara in general charges for rooms. So we don't have any of that information. We have some of it now, that you've put in the letter about why it's not a luxury hotel, but we don't really have justification of the pricing point.
Thank you for the question, Chair Baughian and Commissioner DeLucio. If you saw, as you saw in the letter from the Coastal Commission, the first LUP policy that he referred to was regarding a responsibility that we as the city have, is to create a program on how to monitor these things. We don't have that yet, and I'm sure it's on our list of things to do. But until that, we don't have a real technical way of monitoring this. But in reviewing the project and during the land review process, we, you know, we clearly did not categorize this as a luxury hotel. Of course, there's a roof deck. I mean, some of the things that would count as a luxury hotel was having a pool. I've said at hotels that have pools before, and they were far from luxury. So I'm just saying, you know, moving forward, I think we are going to be working towards focusing more on that and getting more details during review process. But at this point, the city still does not have a method of asking for this analysis and conducting the analysis. But, like I said, the project is not a luxury hotel, so.
And I know that, so basically, so if we approve this today with, you know, with the coastal permit, then the coastal permit, is that then sent to the Coastal Commission, and they review it again to see if they're in agreement, or it's absolutely, it's our determination, it ends here?
Thank you. This is not, this is in the non-applicable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. So what we plan on doing is responding to the letter we perceived, and explaining to him that we, you know, thank you, yes, we are learning about this, and the project is, again, not a luxury hotel. And we'll just send him the condition and tell him that that's how we addressed it.
You know, I think you did a good job with the condition and all that. And I think the price point was an example I'm calling out. I don't know if they're going to necessarily need justification on the price point. Hope the city attorney's here.
Commissioner Boss, Commissioner DeLucio, can we look at the provision you have here, the moderate cost provision, hearing our planners and staff talking?
Sorry, my microphone is off. Because we're not there yet in terms of, you know, looking at price points and everything else. This, what we have here in terms of the moderate cost provision is the safest approval that I recommend for planning commission to go forward, because as you see, Coastal Commission has accepted it. You know, we don't know in terms of where the price point lies and everything else. So what you would look to gain or risk in changing that provision is too much versus what you have here, kind of guaranteed forward. And as Bonnison said, that this whole project has been viewed as not a luxury hotel, but as a moderate costing. And so I think we are safe in that regard.
Yeah, and I don't suggest the price point either. I think that's, I get it. I know what you're saying. So I just wanted to point that out, though, and hopefully we'll develop that policy sometime in the near future. I know you guys have a lot on your plate. You guys do a great job.
Okay, Commissioner Wardlow just left the room, but she was next. But Mr. Barnwell, you had her name on and off, and it keeps going back and forth. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This isn't a comments section, but I wanted to go back to the issue brought up by my esteemed colleague to my left, Ms. Boss, about the housing for workers. And somehow, we talk, we seem to have come to the conclusion that housing for workers is not an operational issue for a hotel. We have a lot of operational issues for a hotel. We've got parking, we've got kitchen, we've got, but somehow or other, the housing for the employees is not in an operational issue category. It's in a housing category like, you know, an apartment. Am I understanding that correctly? And is that almost flawed somehow? Because, in other words, we're saying that we wouldn't get any worker housing.
I mean, I don't know how they do it in Vegas, but I don't know if they provide housing for all the hotels in Vegas. I'd have to look at that. But at this point, yeah, we don't have a mechanism to require hotel developers to provide housing. And I don't know if that's a flaw, or just the way it is.
Well, I mean, it's just something to consider, because, you know, when we talked about the hotel at the end of Garden Street, we hammered that one big, and those guys said, okay, we will convert a couple of our little one-bedroom units into housing for our employees, which was, I thought, was a great gift. But it brings up that whole idea, you know, I don't have to go into detail on it, but, and these workers are not typically, you know, they don't own Riviera homes. They're worker bees, and they need this kind of thing. And I wondered, if we had, you know, if we had rooms that were not actually housing for the workers, if they were like, for example, hospitals have rooms for doctors and nurses to spend overnight, if they need. You know, it's a housing component for the kind of people who make the building work, but they don't really have, you know, living rooms and kitchens and stuff like that, but they have a way to live there. That might be another thing that might be interesting for us to look at, particularly for these kinds of operations like hotels. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Wardlow, or Vice Chair Wardlow.
Thank you all, and thank you to staff for the presentation and to the applicant. I really appreciate it. I have a few questions. I do feel like some of my colleagues have touched on some of the things I wanted to ask about, but I'm still a little confused, and I apologize that I had to run out really briefly. So on the housing front that Commissioner Barnwell just mentioned, obviously, I've gotten a couple of outreach from members of the community, asking, you know, why can't this be housing, for the same issues that we all understand, because the housing crisis is dire in our community. I appreciate staff's presentation and explaining that it is just not, that given the zoning, it's not eligible. But to what Commissioner Barnwell was saying, is the fact that housing is not eligible as a full project, does that preclude the ability for there to be an onsite manager housing? Is that what was, is that the case? No, no deal.
Commissioner Wardlow, that's correct. A housing, a manager's unit would not be allowed here.
Okay. And I apologize for kind of harping on this, but when you're at the train station, right, and you look across the train station, which is in the same zone as this is, like from the map that was shown earlier, there is residential across that, across from the tracks. Is it that this lot specifically is just not allowed to have it, even though there's residential in the same zone right across? Like, why is that? Is it that this lot is called out in the Cabrillo-specific plan? Because if you look at the map that was shown earlier, the area that's, you know, designated as this can't have housing, it does have housing.
There's probably, there's no specific plan for this project, but...
So this area, right? So if you're in the light blue area across from the train tracks, that is, there's housing there?
There's some hotels there on Chapala Street. There is some housing. It's probably non-conforming. It's probably been there for decades before the implementation of the HRC 2 zone, so.
Okay, so all of that was just built before? Because my friend lives right there, sorry.
Yeah, housing would not be...
There's housing there. Okay. All right. And so we've crossed that bridge. No housing there. Okay. So now I think everybody in the public can know that that is why this hotel project is being proposed, and that there is no opportunity whatsoever for housing, which is unfortunate. But, so going to the hotel itself, who is going to be the manager of the hotel, and what are some examples of projects that they have done in other communities? And what are the general price points of those projects, given that clearly we have a lack of information of how we're going to be able to determine that this is going to be a low-cost hotel, to the point that staff made? You know, you could stay at a hotel that has pools, and it can definitely still not be luxury. I've also stayed at hotels that don't have pools, but then they are luxury, right? They're boutiques, and they're really expensive, a lot of those in slow. So just wanted to understand a little bit more about the management company that will run the hotel.
Chair Baughian and Commissioner Wardlow, that is not under the purview of, you know, who manages the hotel, so I will let the applicant speak to that.
Is that, is it that we're not allowed to ask those questions in general, even though we're, you know, one of the specific conditions from the coastal is to determine that this is a non-luxury? Is that, has that not in our purview to understand the management and the...
Well, from my perspective, for example, 99 Cent store is going away, and we don't know what's going to go in there. It's an allowed use in the zone. We don't, we don't, as a design, as a staff, we don't look at who's going to, you know, run the store the next time, if it's going to be a high-end store or a low-end store. We don't really have any purview over who's going to...
But isn't that a condition of, like, isn't that part of the requirement for this to be allowed to move forward, that it's a moderate-priced hotel?
It's a, it's a, it's moderate-priced hotel based on its design. Doesn't have any of the amenities. So regardless of who owns it, it will be a moderate-based, moderately priced hotel, because it doesn't have the types of amenities that qualify it as a luxury hotel.
Okay. And based on your expertise, the additions to the staff report that we received today would suffice the Coastal Commission's concerns that they noted in their letter?
I would hope so. I don't know what else they would want us to do.
Okay.
And you can still talk to the applicants about who's the owner, and who's going to probably, if they know yet, who's going to manage it, if they want to...
I would appreciate it, if that's possible.
Yeah, hi, Craig Minus. I mean, a lot of those details are not ironed out. So we are working with the hotel operator that has been advising us along the way. You know, I think, again, we are not a luxury hotel for the, you know, 20 reasons that I put up on the screen. And I'm not really sure that, you know, who the operator is, you know, would categorize it as luxury or not. I mean, you know, you can buy a Toyota car. I mean, Toyota makes luxury cars, and they make non-luxury cars. I mean, the hotel operator would be similar to kind of a car manufacturer here. Just because they do have boutique or luxury hotels doesn't mean that they can't do non-luxury hotels. So, again, I wish I could be a little more clear. You know, I want to kind of resolve your questions, but again, you know, there is a luxury hotel, literally a stone's throw away, you know, the California, and we're not going to compete with that. Our site is inferior. We just don't have, we're not on State Street like that. We don't have the size. You know, this is a really good opportunity to provide a moderate hotel. I think, you know, we can't, you know, the policy doesn't require us to like guarantee a rate or anything, but just like other business markets is going to determine, you know, what the rates can be, and we're clearly going to have to be under, you know, the luxury competitors in the area.
Okay. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you. Switching topics a little bit. So I, number one, I am very supportive of this project. I think it's going to be an added benefit for this specific area, so just to level set that. I wanted to understand kind of what outreach has been done to Amtrak, because I appreciate the notes that staff made that now employee parking would be incorporated into this. But if some employees end up parking at Amtrak, because Amtrak's easy if the hotel is at maximum capacity, has Amtrak been informed? Are they aware? Are they supportive of this?
Chair Baughian, Commissioner and Commissioner Wardlow, as an adjacent neighbor of the property, they would have received a notice of the project, and so they've received notice, yeah.
Okay. So no other further outreach has been done?
No.
And then, I think this is going to be a no, but just wanted to ask. So for the hotel, for the rooftop bar quasi-restaurant, if that were to be open to the public, that would change the parking requirements, correct? And that's why I know.
That's for the record, yes, that is correct.
And then, in the spirit of, you know, trying to make this a less car-dependent use, I appreciated the information on the bike racks, but I was a little confused. Is there an opportunity to have more bike racks? It seems like there was a limit on that, and some have to be in different areas. Could we, could you guys explain a little bit more about that? Because I think this would be a great example of having, you know, ample bike racks, maybe ones that people can rent, and that would, you know, encourage folks to use the train, knowing that this is a site that's going to have easily rentable bikes and things available.
Yes, Commissioner, let's see. First, let me, before I answer the bike question, I did also want to point out in the planning commission conditions of approval, that it's common for all of our hotel developments to have transportation demand management measures. So it's also a requirement for the hotel owner to purchase bus passes for their employees, and then also be posting all the different schedules, that they would also cover a guaranteed ride home, say, yes, if they're sick and they need to get home immediately, then the employer can cover that cost. And then, as far as for bike parking, I think the more bike parking could be provided. They were providing, I think, one more than what the zoning ordinance required. I think we're just up against a lot of space of trying to fit the 20, or 42 parking spaces in the valet configuration. So most of those are long-term, and then there is some, a couple in the public right-of-way, and there could be some additional ones. But note that even when they're in the public right-of-way, that they're meant for beyond this use. So others, members of the public could be using those bike racks. So it's sort of an operational thing that we, once it's in operation, that they can continue to assess. continue to assess. Right in that very area, there's, there's the B Cycle Public Bike Share, just right at Amtrak. There's several bicycles to use, and then they're also within easy walking distance to a lot of bike rental companies, just right in that area.
Okay, perfect. That's the remainder of my questions. Thank you.
Okay, any other commissioners? Commissioner Lodge, do you have any questions? Okay, none, okay. I have a whole bunch, so let's get into them. Okay. Steph, first off, can you confirm, you know, I look at this site almost like a mini Garden Street Hotel, honestly. It's got every same issue before us. And some of them we, because that project had all kinds of hair on it, some of them we didn't really dive into, and this one, I think I'm going to dive into a couple of them. One of them was the comments by the Coast Commission. First off, can you confirm there is no toxics on this site? That this is not a site which is going to have a plume or anything like we have with the Garden Street Hotel, which is going to have to revolve some significant mitigation? Because we're asking to basically give it an exemption, so I'm just want to make sure that this is not that.
Chair, I can't confirm that because I haven't gone, I haven't looked at the site, but it is not on any of the lists such as a leaking underground storage tank.
And the other one was, so.
Yes, exactly. And there are times, like for example, the Cottage Workforce Housing Project, there was no record of any underground tank, but they started digging up to create the foundations and they found a tank. So it does happen and there's no predicting that.
It does happen. I've had it happen to myself, so, okay. Next, Jessica, can we talk about parking a little bit? In this case, we're proposing a valet parking system. And I've looked at the drawings and, as somebody that actually was a valet, early when I was a young high school kid, in dealing with very tight valet parking situations, are you comfortable with the design of parking space 35 through 37 in this configuration? Because it seems like it really constrains the ability of 27 through 34 to actually operationally exist from a valet's point of view.
Chair Balkey, I would say that the short answer was yes. We had a lot of discussion during the DART review phase on the layout for the valet parking, so much so that we had several focus meetings with the valet operator to kind of go over how, how would it work and process? Because as you noticed on the site plan, that the, some, a lot of the parking is very close together. It does not, outside of the ADA spaces, none of this meets our standard access and parking standards, and how you have relief is from valet. That's what through their valet operator and showing some of the other similar sites and similar layouts, that they were able to prove that it can function. And, and so we had meetings kind of going over at Ignogia, how they would do space by space, what that would look like.
Okay.
And we were very insistent too, that none of the valet operation would take place in the right-of-way, that it needed to all happen on-site.
All right, so you're comfortable?
Yes.
I may not be as comfortable, but I don't think it's something to not have this project. It's going to be the operator's problem, honestly, when it comes down to it, and I think they're pushing it a little bit, honestly, just to just put it there.
And please note too, we've had in the past where some other hotels in the downtown area would use, because this is also adjacent to a city public parking lot, and before we had the license plate reading, there would be a shuffle of tickets as sort of the overflow, and the city has measures in place with the LPR that that can't happen either. So just wanted to let you know that we have lots of eyes on, on the valet operations.
Okay. And you mentioned in your testimony about a study for the entire funk zone that was done. In that study, was there a recommendation of establishing a parking district for this whole area? And if that was the case, what's the status of that? Because it seems as somebody that goes to the funk zone, half the time I end up parking in the train station parking lot because I can't find any parking elsewhere, or it's the parking structure, if it has spaces at the time, especially on weekends over at the hotel that you own, the one down there. So what's the status of that? And are we looking at this, solving this from a system-wide standpoint? And if that's the case, would there be opportunities for people to park in the, in the public parking adjacent to the hotel?
The, I would say for this, the parking study, again, it was a point in time, again, 2018 was the year, we actually liked, because it was pre-pandemic, as far as for the, the study. And I'm happy to forward this to the planning commission through Ms. Yarciunega, just as a reference, because there is, you see a lot of development in the funk zone, so I think it's a good study just to be knowledgeable about. But roughly, like, the conclusions of the study say that there's plenty of parking in the funk zone, but just like anywhere, we've heard when, that when downtown parking was trying to raise a parking rate, that life as we knew was going to end. And, and it's amazing how many people do not see the cost of parking, that it is borne to somebody. And I think that where you say it's hard to park, it's because everybody wants to park literally within an inch of their destination. So again, when they did a series of days and times and all of that on availability, generally in the funk zone, there is always availability of parking, it's just sometimes you have to pay for it. Yes, or walk a little bit.
Okay, so.
And then as far as, again, for, to avoid that, like, to, I mean, a bigger picture, having on-street-price parking would be the best, because it would be able to hit a certain price point for the people that do want to park within an inch of their destination, that at any time, there would always be two to three spaces of on-street parking available. That's how they're designed, and it's meant to be like at different times of day or in your peak periods, that's, there would be a higher cost for that on-street parking, et cetera. But then the, the public parking garages would be always at a lower cost. So that's the part that's been on hold and politically at the time in 2018, when this went before council, it was not supported at that time. But I do think citywide, this will continue to be a conversation, and at some point, we will be there and we'll be ready for that.
So at some point in time, you might bring, I'm trying to understand.
Yes.
The punchline of the answer, and you're describing basically what downtown Ventura has as far as their parking structures and their downtown, they basically push you into the structures unless you want to pay through the nose to be on the curb adjacent to, you know, closer you are, the more it costs and the shorter the timeframe, so.
Right. And really to give the customers the precious curb space.
Okay, so you've answered my questions on parking. I'm going to get into, and this is honestly, I've been trying to understand this, and I believe we've had people here, both our FEMA folks and the public works folks, explaining whether or not subsurface parking garages are allowed. And I'll leave it to the staffs, they believe it is. Mr. Johnson has brought up evidence that I keep hearing, and honestly, at some point in time, if you get through this project and you get to construction drawings and FEMA gives you a different answers, at risk of the developer. So, you know, I'm honestly not quite there that all this matches up, but, you know, they're big boys and they'll find out one day, good, bad, or indifferent, and their insurance rates will be according to what. So I'm willing to let that issue go, but I'm concerned we don't really have real clarity on this, and, you know, I may end up having to be part of that litigation that goes through with the Garden Street Hotel, and maybe some judge will answer this question, but I honestly find it clear as mud, honestly. So I'll just, I'll leave that one.
Chair, if I may just comment on that. FEMA has given their approval of the 101 Garden Street project, that it is mixed use and that a subterranean parking is allowed.
Is that, is that because we required them to have housing as part of their project? Or is it some other definition?
No, the residential units, aside from the hotel rooms themselves, were not part, were not the reason that determination was made. The structure would have been, in the eyes of FEMA, non-residential, because they do not believe, they do not, hotel rooms are not residential in FEMA's eyes. It's only an ASE24 that a hotel is defined as residential.
Right, I understand that. So then the question is, does ASEME apply? And does it apply? Where does it apply? This is where I start losing track of this.
It does apply, and with all the governing documents that I spoke about earlier, if there are any sections that are more restrictive than another section of another document of the four, that applies. However, there is not a conflict in the definition of mixed use from the ASE24 and the NFIP.
Okay. Well, thank you for your answer on that. Moving on to my other questions, I want to confirm this project is not in the appeal zone. While the Garden Street Hotel was partially in and partially out, had both, so it is appealable to the Coast Commission, because I remember we got into some of this conversation about what's in the Coast Commission's letter this time, but I chose to, since there was a whole lot of other stuff, and that thing was, you know, being, I mean, how many, how many issues can we address on a project? This is when I sort of let go, because I know that the Coast Commission would ultimately be ruling on whether we comply to policy 3.4 and about low, low-cost visitor serving. So my question is, and they, at what point in time did we get our coastal plan adopted, adopted the language we see on page one of the letter at the bottom that is quoted?
Chair Balkey, 2019.
So in 2019, we got this approved, and it specifically requires a development of a detailed program to ensure low-cost visitor-serving accommodations are protected and such, and goes on. Why haven't we done that? Why haven't we, you know, how many years, you know, five years, we still haven't started this process?
Chair Balkey, and the commission, so I'm not sure of the order of elements, so the coastal land use plan lays out several long-term planning measures, you know, including sea level rise study and other areas of study. So that, those programs and goals rest with Long Range Planning Division, along with Sustainability and Resilience Division, as to how those plans and studies are rolled out. I don't have an exact answer as to where that sits in the priority of the programs that were called out in the LUP, but to our knowledge, we don't have that yet, no.
We don't have it yet. So, so while we're in this interim period, we're sort of bootstrapping a definition, which honestly, I have had experience permitting hotels in the coastal zone and also resorts in the hotels in, in the coastal zone, including the Harbor Terrace Project at Port Avila. And we spent weeks with legal counsel negotiating with the Coast Commission on that, and it's an RV and campground about what's considered low-cost. So I'm going to tell you right now, I don't believe your definitions work. I don't believe you meet the Coast Commission's standards on it, so I'll just leave it at that. I, I believe, and unfortunately, we're in the appeals, not, non-appeal zone, so we're the determinant here. So I just want to put that out there, that we are bootstrapping, we don't have the criteria. They usually require studies that show how much the rack rate's going to be here versus what it is in the local area and in the region, and also on a statewide basis as to where this fits to even make these findings. So I just want to put that out there. So then the other question I had is, you know, on the Garden Street Hotel, we had a discussion about the impacts of hotels on housing. And once again, we got into their hotel, that does create additional demand by having employment, and we don't have the numbers in this case, because no study was required, but it will impact our very critical housing situation, and there's no mitigation. Is the city staff, is part of the housing element implementation coming forward with a mitigation program as to impacts from housing, from these kind of projects?
Chair Balkey and commissioners, yes, so the city is proceeding with a housing or in-loo fee study related to non-residential or hotel development and the impact on housing that study is in the works of starting, so that we would have a mechanism to assess the impact and have an in-loo fee tie without that. We don't have a nexus to require it, nor do we have a finding or directives to require that. But that is, that is in the works.
Okay, thank you. Those are my questions, so any other commissioners before we get into deliberations? Okay, so who would like to start with deliberations? Commissioner Barnwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like the project a lot, start with that. I think we were in a PhD class at Berkeley and somebody said, you know, create the ideal location for a hotel. It would be regional transportation close, you know, tourist spots close, restaurants, this is it exactly. So I applaud the use of it. Mr. Usaka, I think, even though you didn't get what you thought before, I think you got a better project this time than, than what Dave Davis was working on with Paul I gather that the moderate pricing concept is going to be based, we don't, we don't have a price point, but it sounds like it's going to be determined by the market and the unit sizes and things like that, we just let that go. The building clearly does not meet any historical structural standards, so we're not going to keep it. I, I want to add some weight to the HLC's soft suggestion that we honor the motorcycle history. I think we, we need to say we're going to do it, rather than let's try. We have many instances in the city of Santa Barbara where we honor activities that occurred in places, not necessarily the structure. We have one right out here in the front lawn. Stuff happened and the structure that had happened is gone. I think we, I think we need to put up a plaque somewhere on the structure to discuss the, the historical importance of the motorcycle and auto-related people. I bought a motorcycle there in 1964. I could hardly get in the front door because there were so many people. So I think we need to do that, and I, I don't know if my fellow commissioners agree, but some sort of a plaque, the weather vane concept is cool, but it was, it was very iffy, so it didn't meet, and it sounded like HLC wanted to do something. The front elevation, I want to support HLC's conclusion that the entrance doorway into the parking lot, it needs some work. That elevation is, is rough. Also, I didn't know what they were talking about when they used the word poetry until I saw the drawing of the front of that thing, and it could use some poetry. I mean, it is going to be a gateway hotel. I think we could tickle that a little bit. The thing that struck me when we went there for our site visit were two things. One of them, we couldn't hear each other talk when we were standing on the front sidewalk. Now, I know the architect's going to deal with that. The other one was the really unsightly and motley collection of paint to wipe out the graffiti on the freeway wall. Now, I, I don't know, I don't think we say, okay, you guys were going to mandatory, you got to clean up that wall. But I think somewhere, we should. wall. But I think somewhere we should allow them, if they want, to go over and paint that wall. Because if you've got a boutique hotel like we have right now and you look across there and see, I counted five different paint colors on that wall, any, any tenant's going to look at that, you know, they go, oh, we've got some graffiti going on here. I don't think that adds to the attractiveness of the hotel. So however we get to that, and I, as I say, I don't think we mandate that these people do it, but that they can be allowed to do it because that is, I guess it's Caltrans or something, right? That wall. I think that's something that we should look into because it affects the front gateway. We keep talking about that gateway thing. Are there any street plantings in the sidewalk? I didn't see any. There are street planting, tree, tree, street plantings along the street, but I didn't see any called out in this. Are there? Should there be? Can we?
Chair Baughy and Commissioner Brian, I'm sorry, I didn't pull up the landscape plan, but I do have that available. There is significant landscaping proposed along the frontage on Ray Road and on, well, on Ray and Montecito Streets. The landscape architect at the H L C was very careful about that.
Okay, good. I want to go back to the staff and you hear it, you've heard it from us in a relentless and unbroken chain of comments about how do we create housing for people who work at projects like this. I have to say, I'm totally in favor of this project, but the failure of us as a city, and I, I shoulder that, we all shoulder that, we haven't done it. We don't have in lieu fees, we have none of those things. And I mean, if you've been listening to the presidential debates and the vice presidential debates, item number two is housing. We really need to do that. We, we, we need to do that. A discussion was onsite about an art display area. Did I hear that correctly? We were going to have like some art there in the lobby. So the lobby will be open to the public? So the art display will be open only to the people who, who are tenants there? Okay. I look forward to seeing what it's going to look like. The bike racks. I think we, I'm advocate of bike racks, but I want to be sure that, you said there's some on the public sidewalk. They'll be available to the general public as well as people there. I don't know the people who go to hotels like this and use bicycles for anything other than getting around to the tourist sites. It was interesting for me to find out that the traffic, excuse me, the parking determination also includes the employees in that determination. It isn't just the tenants of the building, but also the, didn't know that before. Am I correct that there are, is, one of the H L C comments was use the open roof area for more solar. I'm assuming that there's soldered out. There's solar everywhere. Is that correct? We don't have any other? Okay. Those are my comments, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Vice Chair Wardro.
Thank you, Chair Baughy. And thank you again to staff for answering all of our questions. I really appreciate it. I know some of this is redundant on topics that clearly the Commission cares about. We appreciate you guys spending the time to help us understand how this project is unique. So thank you. And thank you to the applicant for addressing our questions as well. So I'll dive into my question, my comments next, but to Commissioner Barnwell's points, I do like the idea of some type of homage to the property owner's past and, you know, the, as he shared, you know, the old news article citing their store. If that's something that he's interested in, I think that would be a great addition. But obviously, I would, I would defer to him and his preference on that. In terms of the project, I am very supportive of the project. I do think it's very compatible with the neighborhood. I think it's going to add a benefit to this direct community because, you know, this is an area that currently is underutilized and, you know, after hours, it can be a little sketchy. And I think having more development in that area will help increase kind of the safety and security and overall beautification of that area. So I'm supportive of it from that perspective. Obviously, I share, you know, the Commission's concerns and frustration of the lack of ability to address any kind of housing issues in this, but understand that that is what it is. I am supportive of the size, bulk and scale of this. I think that you guys are doing a great job of utilizing a, a smaller site and really maximizing the benefit that it can have. I do believe that, you know, it's not going to have any adverse impact on the community outside of the fact that we can't address housing. But in terms of just the development itself, I think it will be a positive addition. I do think it is consistent with the principles of sound community planning based on the restrictions that our own city has placed on this parcel. So given the limitations that you face in that regards, I think it's very consistent. And so I will be supporting this project. I'm supportive of the parking modification, understanding again, the constrictions that you have and appreciate the work that you did to proactively identify the valet and, and, and work through that with city staff. So thank you for your time and your engagement on this.
All right. Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's been discussion again of, of housing issues, the increased housing demand. In 1975, Coastal Act was adopted. And from that point on, it, it was to protect people's access to the waterfront and to provide for coastal-related services and for visitor-serving services. I, I've been in go-rounds with the Coastal Commission or the city has ever since then, but they are adamantly at that, at that time, and I don't think they've changed their position much since. It, it is not to be residential and that because they want to protect, you know, these, the need for, for space for coastal-related uses and visitor-serving uses. So I'm, from, I want to go back to some of the other comments that have been made. I like the idea of the motorcycle weather vane, but I think for me, that's enough recognition of the past use of the building. And I, I like the project. I, I think it will be an improvement to the neighborhood. And, you know, the, the city of Santa Barbara with its A U D program is doing, doing more than its share of addressing the regional housing need. So I'll be supporting it.
Okay. Commissioner DeLucio.
Thank you, Chair. I'm supportive of this project and can make the findings, although I think I made my disappointment clear that, and just the, the weird zoning, when you have the name medium high residential, max 27 dwellings per acre, but we can't build housing here. That's disappointed in that, but really appreciative in the clarification that the parking will accommodate employee parking. And again, as somebody who lives in the neighborhood, this site will really enhance a visually degraded area. So looking forward to, to this project.
Okay. Commissioner DeLucio.
Okay. I don't have a lot to say. I am supportive of the project. The findings can be made. I do believe we should have some type of acknowledgement on the site to the motorcycle history. Is it? I don't want to use the word historic because historical, it is historic. However, the, it was determined that the building is not historic. So let's be really careful of the wording we use for that. As far as graffiti on the freeway wall, I don't think it's the obligation of the hotel to deal with that. Is that Caltrans? Or who would clean up that?
Commissioner DeLucio through the chair. It's a mix between Caltrans and, and city staff. So anytime, if everybody has the City Connect app now to take photos and then send that in, it is a pretty, just having worked on the state street under crossing, graffiti is very rampant in that area. It may be with the other land uses coming in that will provide more eyes on the street and maybe deter some of the graffiti use. But it is a, a frequently checked area, but as soon as you clean it up, it's tagged, it's tagged daily. So, but it is on the, the city's watch for that and, and police department. It seems to be one particular person that seems to be doing it based upon the, the tagging.
I want to thank you for being here today. I always value your, your contribution and your coworkers. I forgot your name, but I appreciate, you were very helpful also. And one other thing about the parking, that was news to me too, when you have a, as far as supplying visitor parking, you know, I didn't know you mixed in employee with that. I think you answered the question very well, though, when you said it's going to become an operational thing. Because we really don't know how many parking spaces you're going to need. You are required, you will, if we pass this, you will be required to have 42 parking spaces. But you'll see how that works out once a hotel opens up. And I sort of surmised that you're probably not going to need the 42 parking spaces for, for the, the visitors of the hotel. So then again, I guess it does become an operational thing if, if some of the employees can park on, onsite. But, but I think the intent of the code was that it be only for visitors. Is it from, is that, am I correct? That's where the rule comes up from, was made up? That is, they need 44 spaces for visitor parking?
From, from a, just, there's, there's two different ways to look at. So from a zoning perspective, and we don't go on the details of what's factored in for per zoning, it just happens to be that it's calculated per unit. And then just as a retail spaces typically for, based on square footage, restaurants by chair. But when you dive into, when we're taking a next step further for parking demand, which could be higher than zoning or it could be lower than zoning, when you go into the manuals of what is factored in into whatever the, the threshold is, note when you go into the hotel uses, it does factor in employees and then the other, a lot of times ancillary uses within the hotel as well.
And I have one final, thank you, I have one, one final comment. Yes, I was confused by the zoning also when they're putting, calling, have residential mixed into this and when most of it's not residential allowed on this, in this particular zone. However, for the most part, I am a proponent that this is a coastal zone and we should be building hotels in the coastal zone. Same time, I'm a big proponent that we have a big shortage of housing and we need housing. And, and so I'm, I guess, I'm, I hope, I don't think the, I know the A U D program had a, has some in lieu fee in that, the 10%, but I'm really very, very surprised the city up until now, most cities have like 20% where there would have been some kind of fee that this property would have been, had to pay into a housing fund. Would that be the commercial linkage fee perhaps? But so that's, that's where I think the city has, 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 needs to step up to the plate and we, we're really, really overdue not to have any type of in lieu fees other than the A U D program. So, or commercial linkage fee. So I just feel like that would help solve our problem because all these, those dollars that go into a housing fund, those dollars, you know, you get grants from those and it, it really multiplies significantly of, of how much housing you can supply with those dollars. And, but at the same time, again, we are in the coastal zone. I think we, and that is the intent of the coastal, which I think Commissioner Lodge mentioned, that's the intent of the coastal zone to be, to have visitors coming in and having accommodations for them. And let's think of something else, the T O T taxes. We're not, we, by not allowing the hotels, we're, we're going to be, we're, we have already, the city's in a deficit and we need, we need the T O T dollars. We need to grow the, we need to grow visitors. That's what the city's driven by. Most of it's tourists. And if we don't, we need to encourage more to come, not, not to, not to persuade them not to. So anyway, I'll, I'll stop now, but I'm definitely in favor of this, of this hotel. And I'm glad my, seems like my co-commissions are as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Barnwell. Thank you, Mr. Chair. One last sequence of comments. We didn't talk on it. You mentioned it, but I'm glad to hear it's still in place. But the employer provides bus passes. So that component of the workers as operational assistance to the hotel is taken care of. And I think that's just great. I don't know that we necessarily need parking. And insofar as the housing issue, Ms. Lodge hits it, the coastal zone is not for housing. However, big however, the coastal zone should allow for provision of the newly generated workers that the hotels now suddenly provide for. I don't think we thought about that when we did the 1975 Coastal Act, but we, we clearly, when we talk about housing in the coastal zone, we need to think about that very, very specific type of housing. And I did not wax as poetic as I wanted to on the excellent work of the staff. So thank you very much and, and thank you guys that showed up for this meeting. I know sometime, we, we grind these things to a fine powder here at the planning division. That's our job. So thanks for sticking around. Okay. Did you have a comment?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I do want to echo Commissioner DeLucio's statement that because this is not a designated historic resource that we're losing, we cannot apply mitigation measures to the project. That's not a requirement of SEQA in this case. However, your commission can comment or recommend or suggest that the applicant consider incorporating that on their own accord and incorporating it into their project scope. But I just wanted to be clear that Commissioner DeLucio was correct in stating that. And then one other clarification, Ms. Brodesson also mentioned this in the report. So just to be clear, the zoning does not allow residential. So the zone district very clearly doesn't allow, what you guys are, what has been referenced is the mix of hotel and residential is the general plan, coastal land use designation, and that's the larger, more broad scale, broad brush. And in that regard, there was also a comment about residential in the area. So as Ms. Brodesson stated, prior to this designation, it was C M, I think, zoned manufacturing and under pyramid zoning. So less, more restrictive land uses are allowed in a most open land use. So at that time, residential could have been allowed. And so there could have been mixed use and multi-unit residential development in that area at that time, but not since its designation as H R C two. So I just wanted to kind of add that background to, to the discussion.
Mr. Domas, you had something?
Thank you, Chair Baughy. Commissioner, I also wanted to add, take this time too, in terms of making a motion, while it's a very nice sentiment, we can't require as part of the motion, a requirement of any kind of honorarium or plaque. It's not, there's no nexus. It has to be a land use issue and that, that goes outside the scope. Now, the applicants can hear that, understand the, the sentiment of the commission, but of course they can't be required to do so as a condition. It really goes outside the land use kind of purview that we're here for today.
Comment noted that they could volunteer such if they so desired. Correct. Okay. All right. All right. As to my comments, first off, if you were going to build a hotel, this is the right location. Unfortunately, it's a small site and honestly compared to, I wish it was a bigger site or you could have acquired some of the land adjacent that the city owns to make it a, you know, it's very constrained. You did as well as possible on a very constrained site. I do honestly still have a little concern about the valet being just a little bit operationally tighter than probably you'd ever want to do. But that's going to be their, the valet's problem. And I'm willing to let go of that conversation about, you know, spots 35 through 37. I just think they're not going to get used. They're just going to abandon them because they find that operationally it doesn't work. But knowing the site is next to the train station, I think you'll probably find that there's, you know, you're conservative in your, in, in your allocation of folks that are going to, you know, come car free. So I, I think you'll be fine long-term on that. So I support the parking modification and I support the development plan. It's a very well-designed project. I will not support the coastal development permit as currently a condition by staff because I do not believe it complies with the coastal commission's findings. We need to meet on Coastal Act Section 30213. I think the city's just simply falling short. So when, when we get to the motion, I'd like that we separate the, the actions out. So I can vote no on that. You're going to get a majority, but I think I, I need to put that on the record for, for the public and for the commission because I think that they, they, they outlined it quite well in the next to last paragraph. We just haven't done the work. We just haven't done the work that normally you would say. So with that, I'll move for a motion.
Sure. Donald?
So I, sorry. So you came up with a solution for that, you know, for the, about the moderate-cost hotel provision, add that condition to address that it's not a luxury hotel and it's a moderate-cost hotel, a low-cost hotel. So does this, does the, help me here, does the development permit, then it goes back, you send it to the Coastal Commission? It's over now. They don't, they don't comment any further once we make our decision.
Chair Bauckey and Commissioner, we will send them the notice of final action and the resolution. So they'll be aware of it.
And that's the end of it for now?
Yeah, because it's in the non-appellable jurisdiction.
What did you say?
Non, sorry, non-appellable jurisdiction.
Can you explain that to me, non-appellable versus appealable?
Sure. Non-appellable means it's not appealable to the Coastal's Commission. Appealable, so if you look at the coastal zone, there's the stripes, there's the, like, all along the beaches there, that, those projects go to the Coastal Commission. Then you get a little further inland, those are appealable to the Coastal Commission. Further inland, they're still in the coastal zone, but they're, the city is the main decision-maker on certain projects. So this is in the area that's in the non-appellable jurisdiction, further inland.
So the Garden Street Hotel was in the appealable?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that.
But I can show you a map of that if you want to see it eventually.
We'll have an orientation offsite on that.
Sure.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Honestly, that was, that's the reason why that discussion really didn't get into, because I personally came to the conclusion that that issue of the low-cost conversation is going to be dealt with the Coastal Commission, and honestly, the city's, that project will be appealed to, you know, to the Coastal Commission. And you've got four appellants even at the city council at the moment, and probably get litigated too. So I just didn't go there then, because I think we had the same situation. Just want to put that out there. So, so you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion if you want me to.
Can you separate those?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Are you going to put this up on the screen for me to make it? Well, obviously, the part of the motion is the project environmental review findings, the project qualifies for an exemption, further environmental review under SEQA Guidelines Section 15332, based on the city staff analysis of the staff report. You can make findings for the parking modification. It will not be inconsistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance and will not cause an increase in demand for parking space or loading space in the immediate area. Well, okay, I'm going to stop there. But, and also, as part of the conditions, is that we want to add the, we want to add the, oh, forget it. Do we have the moderate-cost hotel provision right now as part of this existing motion? Or is that part of the?
Chair Bauckey and Commissioner DeLucio would say, once, if you want to separate these out per Chair Bauckey's request, then you would say, the project, you can make the findings for the project, and you would say, subject to the revised conditions of approval, and you could add the fact that staff has added a condition regarding, what is it?
The moderate-cost hotel provision.
Yeah, in the memo, it's in the memo.
So we can make, that's part of the motion I'm making right now?
Sure, unless you want to separate it out per Chair Bauckey's request.
We'll separate it out, so let's hold off. So we'll make that provision later. So that's my, what I've already articulated is my motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Okay. Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner Lodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Boss?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Chair Bauckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
No, I'll make another motion. This is the coastal development permit findings. The project's consistent with the policies of the California Coastal Act, and the project is consistent with all applicable policies of the city's local coastal plan, all applicable implementing guidelines and all applicable provisions of the code. And I would like to add, add to that, that we add to the conditions of, the conditions of the moderate-cost hotel provision.
I'll second that.
That's my motion. Good job.
I'll second that.
You got a motion and a second? Can we have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner Barnwell?
Oh, Barnwell, yes, that's me, yes.
Commissioner Boss?
No.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodge?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Chair Bauckey?
No.
Motion passes.
Okay. So I think we're done with this item. Thank you for your time. Oh, oh, did we do the development find?
We have more?
Do those, okay. We're sorry about that.
Oh, man. Okay, development planning, what am I going to do, the development plan findings, that the proposed, do I have to read all this, the proposed?
I prefer not.
Listen, we don't need to read this. We, I think we can make these findings.
How about as outlined in the staff report?
Outlined in the staff report.
In the staff report.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Can I have a roll call vote?
Thank you, Chair Bauckey. I'll take roll call vote. Commissioner Boss?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodge?
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Chair Bauckey?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now you're excused. All right. So moving on, we will move to, find all my papers here.
You have to read the, that it can be appealed.
There is a, yes, you are correct, Mr. DeLucio. This action of the commission is subject to a 10-day calendar appeal period. And Ms. Brodesson and staff, thank you for all your efforts in your presentation today. Okay. So, next, we move to administrative agenda. Do we have a staff hearing Officer Lea's on report?
No report.
Commissioner Boss? Do we have any reports by other commissioners that are liaison to a numerous number of other entities? I don't see any. With that, we have no discussions on subcommittee and workshop items. I will adjourn the meeting at 3:13 PM. That concludes the October 3, 2024 Planning Commission hearing, and our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, October 10, 2024. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.